Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elia. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. If we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the July 26, 2011, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Commissioner Kokoski has a dog today?
I have the cutest little dog today. We're not sure, it's a mutt mix, I think, that's what Tal called it. I think, well, the dog warden thinks he's a spaniel. Maybe Australian shepherd mix, I don't know. I have an Australian shepherd and his face kinda looks like my dog's face, and if it is, I'm gonna tell you, they're the smartest, hey, come here, the smartest dogs in the whole world. But he is very, very cute. Very friendly. He was brought in by Dr. Wood, he was at Dr. Wood's Animal Clinic, probably brought in by the Police Department, lost, but he's very, very, very sweet dog, and he makes somebody an awesome pet. He just wants to be petted and loved, he's so cute. Might have to take him myself, but he will be available on Saturday at our Lorraine County Dog Pound, and don't forget, we do span neuter all of our animals and also, most of their shots are taken care of as well, so come check 'em out and check out the other dogs that we have there available too. Thanks.
Madam Clerk?
At 11 o'clock, we'll have our IAC meeting, 11:30, we'll have the Court's Budget, 1 p.m., Per Bay Budget. Under Resolutions, Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Proprations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, when is the lower reimbursement gonna go into effect?
Should be in effect, should've been in effect when you passed it?
Yeah, when we passed it.
If somebody's, if somebody's put in expense, some of the expense vouchers come for previous travel, and if somebody's gonna ask for travel in the future, if they put the wrong number down there, they'll only be reimbursed with what the policy says.
Okay.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Airport Authorized Grant Application for Federal Assistance to be submitted to Federal Aviation Administration for Airport Improvement Project Program for the following projects: One, Runway Rehab, Runway 725, Payment, Crack Ceiling and Payment Markings; Two, Rehab Taxi Lanes, Reconstruct Taxi Lanes A and B; Engineering Services and Construction Costs are Eligible for Reimbursements from FAA at 95% federal share and 5% local. The estimated cost of the grant application is $515,000.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Cordez, at the $515,000, do we have someplace that our 5% local share is already appropriated and encumbered?
No.
So we have to come up with $26,000?
If we're approved for the grant, yes. The, again, you have the opportunity at some future date to decide you don't wanna go forward with that, we're simply putting the grant application in.
Okay. Any idea when they're talking about this coming down, when it'll be awarded, or?
Couple of weeks, you know, we've been rolling money for a few years now, we get about $150,000 a year from the FAA, and we can stack it for a few years, so we're in the last, we'll start losing money, we don't start utilizing it. The reason it's, it's high is because we had to stack it, so we had enough money to do the job. So it'll be up to the Board, you know, at the time they approve it to proceed, if not, some of the money will still stay stacked, but I believe we'll at least lose the oldest pool of money, which is about, right, about $150,000.
Okay, thank you.
But the FAA, I know with the cracking, the ceiling, and the markings, it's a visibility issue for the planes, correct?
Absolutely.
So we've been running to issues there?
Oh, we've already run into issues, we've been delaying this so long that they've been reporting on this for a while, and while they've tried to work with us, they definitely have pointed out several times that we're deficient in these areas.
Okay. The Board permits, I'd like to go through and just talk about this, this one issue I got hit with regarding the sales tax is the airport. Now, I know that the Board previously tried to shut the airport down, can't do that, and there's federal grants tied to this, so if we wanted to, not even shut it down, but not to do, to try to sell the airport, we would have to cover those federal grants.
Correct.
Right, let me run through it this way, the, there's actually two, it's a two-pronged problem. One is the FAA, the second part is the condo owners out at the airport itself. Previous airport boards entered into long-term lease agreements that obligate this county to operate that airport. So if the FAA was to relent and allow things to happen with the airport, which I don't believe they will at all, from my trips to see them, we would still have to deal with the people that have legitimate leases, ground leases on condos they built that are on the airport property. Some of those still have about 50 years to go on them, and it says, one of the, one of the lines in there says that the county will continue to operate the airport as a public airport, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, otherwise, we could end up in a lot of lawsuits there. So it's not just an FAA problem, it's also a tenant problem.
And so, and what I've been instructing people is, it's not something that we, we can close down, it's something that we have to maintain. I know I'm repeating this.
Sure, the FAA, the FAA has this as a secondary airport, that is, to keep small commercial traffic or private traffic away from the airspace at Cleveland Hopkins, so that they can be in the, you know, the main business of landing big planes, big jets. And they believe that, that these smaller regional airports are necessary to limit that traffic in the airspace around the bigger airports, and so that, that's why we're in existence. Obviously, we can't land stuff that's too big, 'cause the runway's too short, but they were pretty adamant, when I was in Chicago, that they're not gonna let any of these small airports close.
When did these leases go into effect? You said there's 50 years left on it?
Well, you know, I was just dealing with, with one on a business that, that has closed, they had a 20-year with a 20-year renewable, they did the 20 years, they renewed it a few years back, they still have about eight or nine years on that lease. Some of them had, those were 220s, some of them had 50 and 50. I think council has since discovered that those timeframes were probably not correct in accordance with FAA requirements for use of the land. The other thing with FAA, that's with those condos, and there's a lot of them, might have to get a list of when they all expired, but most of them, we've only entered into one lease agreement out at, out at that airport, since the Board of Commissioners has assumed control of the airport, and that would be for the new hangars that were built, which was a public-private partnership, dealing with that. Now, the FAA leases, they, they have given that money over, over a period of time, and there is stipulations in those grants for the purchase of land and so forth, how that has to happen. The other thing is, before you can even think about closing the airport, you have not, you have not, excuse me, let me have it on status, you cannot have received FAA funding for 20 years. So you would have to stop taking any FAA funding now, and then wait 20 years before you could dispose of the airport to shut it down.
Right, and also out of there, I think, I don't know if everyone knows, we have life flight that flies out of there, and other programs, so, okay, well, thank you, Mr. Cordez, I just wanted to bring that up, it is a talking point out in the community.
It always is.
Always is, very.
They, they seem, they seem to have a lack of understanding, we've tried, I think we've talked about this 20 times in here, whenever we have an opportunity, and you're right, a lot of people come up and say, you know, why are you cutting transit, why didn't you close that, that airport out there? And blah, blah, blah.
We try and get our butts kicked.
Pretty significantly, and we wrecked the car on the way back from Chicago.
Yes, you did.
I have a question that I don't think we've ever asked you, has anybody ever approached Cleveland Hopkins to see if they would be interested in purchasing the airport? Since we are a secondary, I mean, we're, they need us to keep that, the smaller planes away from their airport.
I hadn't really considered that, but I find it probably highly unlikely that there would be any interest in operating a small airport out in.
Right.
I could certainly send them a letter and ask them, but would you?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
That's their business, that's what they do. I would say, yeah.
I'll send them a letter.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personal actions as indicated on the summer sheet from employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla, I am in receipt of a completed 911 contract for the employees with the United States Workers of America that I wish to discuss with the Board, also the potential sale of real estate. I think that's it, and so I would request that we have an executive session at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting to discuss those items, that's allowable under the sunshine law. Thank you.
Thank you. I, Board, I had spoke to the clerk prior to, I asked her to move this three sales tax issues to the end of the agenda after we do the engineers.
Okay.
So under the Engineer Avotage Notice for Salt Storage Facility, published in Chronicle on July 27th and August 3rd, open at 2:00 p.m. on August 10th, Commissioners' meeting remit, estimate costs $300,000.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Just so everyone knows, this is not a general fund expenditure, it comes out of motor vehicle gas tax.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Are we gonna not bond this with other improvements, though, in the future?
We have a-
If we do any improvements in the future?
Well, we do. My current expectations would be to do the construction notes, we have some road bonds that are in construction notes that we, well, I shouldn't say road bonds, road construction notes for the bond program that we still have outstanding, that we probably will call us together sometime March of next year. At that time, we may either roll this into those bonds if the engineer wants, or we can stay in construction notes for a few years, depending on what is, how he wants to repay those things. Right now, money is rather inexpensive in construction notes, so you get a more aggressive rate in the construction notes. When you go to long-term bonding, you pay a premium to be, you know, to spread that out over a number of years, so we can make that his choice, but he is ultimately gonna be responsible for the debt service on whether it's construction notes or bonds.
Okay.
Do you want me to do the rest of the agenda, or you want me to do the stats next one?
We'll go back to, I mean, oh, we have our comments, let's go back to 11, 12, and 13, and can we read those individually and then comment all three after all three are read?
Number 11, for the purposes of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorraine County for a five-year period, an increase in the existing tax levy pursuant to a higher revised code 5739.021 by the rate of 1/4 of 1%, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to revised code section 5741.021 by the rate of 1/4 of 1%.
Can we hold that, read the next one, please?
I thought you wanted to comment on each one?
No, I wanted to go through all three of them, so we can make them all discussion points.
Okay.
For the purposes of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorraine County for a three-year period, an increase in the existing tax levy pursuant to a higher revised code 5739.021 for the rate of 1/2 of 1%, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to revised code 5741.021 by the rate of 1/2 of 1%.
All right, I'd like to open this up for discussion amongst the Commissioners.
Don't we have to have a motion and a second in order to discuss it?
I don't know if we have to, we can discuss prior to.
We can?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's why I wanted all three read.
Well, you only did two.
No, she did three.
You did all three of them?
All three, all three.
Must've fell asleep during the third one.
Well, my reasoning behind is, we have three different options to consider, if any, if none, if a mixture of multiple ones could go on the ballot, and discussing the $6,250,000 shortfall that's projected for 2012, my thinking is, and I'll give some dialogue along with it, has been the quarter percent for a five-year temporary, just being that it would give us a longer time to work through attrition to balance our budget over the next five years, and also, what that five-year temporary gives us the opportunity to do is, if any of those casino revenues come through that Commissioner Williams' assistant, Neil Lynch, spoke about, we are always have the ability to pull a quarter percent off of the ballot, but I would, just the way Columbus is going in with our local government fund, there's a lot of concern that as those dollars start coming to county government to shore up the state budget, they will just lower the local government fund to county government. Now, there is nothing that is in writing saying that, but as we've seen the writing on the wall this past year, the state has been balancing its budget based on our backs. In speaking with Judge Zalesky the other day, we're actually talking about the Senate Bill 1, which is the four and fives coming back at us, and speaking with the sheriff about the same issue, we don't know how that's going to be funded. So, I mean, my preference, if we're going to go forward with this, and I would prefer that it was a united board, all three agreeing, that we would do a quarter percent five-year temporary, and then as the budget moves forward, see if there's a possibility of rolling back. I believe the three years is too short, and I've been quite outspoken in regards to the issue with the property tax rollback, is not being fiscally responsible, it's tight of a budget, and we haven't had the opportunity to do the auditor's budget yet through our public hearing process, but just the expected 5 or 6% minimum decrease in property taxes inside Milledge directly, I don't believe puts us in a very good position going forward. And I'll open it up to Commissioner Kokoski.
I've been leaning towards the 5% also, and wouldn't we be the heroes if, you know, all that projected possible revenue from the casinos came in, and we didn't need that quarter, and we took it off there, gave it back, and I think people would be very happy with us about that. So we do have that option, and I like that, that option. I think three years may not be long enough. I think we can also sell this to different things that are different about this than what we've done in the past, is instead of a half a percent, we're dropping it down to a quarter, and we're also making it temporary. So I think those are positive things that hopefully could sell this to the residents, and we'll have a long haul between now and, and election to, to educate those people, educate our people on why this is needed.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, well, I was leaning towards the half percent with the property rollback, as far as talking with individuals, once you, once they understand the program, they like the program as far as getting it passed. The concern is, one, the marketing of the program, campaigning for it, two, it's only gonna go up for a, only showing the ballot as a half percent sales tax increase. So taking the time, the money that would be needed to put it together, I don't know if that would be feasible with that campaign. Quarter percent, I think the best option for it is a three-year period, and this is just based off talking with a few hundred people now, for my sample group, out on the baseball fields and everywhere else, they wanna see us go through, make the cuts, and go with a smaller time period, and then if we have to go through and justify it to them again, be held accountable for it. Three to five years may not make, seem like a big difference to us, but to the voters, at least the people I'm talking to, it is a main concern for them. So I'm looking at the quarter percent, three-year levy.
Okay, looks like we have a divided Board on this. Again, I'll state my reasoning for the five-year, reasoning being, just give us enough time to attrition out, and there's always the option of making it less if additional revenues come in. Three-year, I don't know if we can responsibly get deep enough cuts in just a three-year period, we've already done major cuts, and as I've said, people ask me how we're gonna do this, and again, I'm out with the public myself a lot of time, not quite baseball games, my kids are all a lot older than that now, actually, I got grandkids in T-ball, but as we make the discussion points and moving forward on issues, and taking the time to explain them, because again, we're not going to have a large capital campaign, this will not be like, yes, on issue four was two years ago, there's not enough time, there's not enough available capital out there. Again, I believe you've gotta be able to explain this to the public and get it out, and I just think for us to balance out our budget and being responsible as fiscal agents, which is our number one job, as County Commissioners, the five-year gives us a target to roll things back and then look for additional revenues, and hopefully, the economy picks up that we do have additional dollars. I, just the three-year, I just think leaves us really short, and again, I don't know if we can get to the, achieve dollars in that amount of time, just based on the age of our employees and stuff, and as you have attrition and retirements. And the way I've looked at it, and I've explained this to other people, the way the Board of Commissioners is gonna have to look at doing this year's budget, well, 2012's budget, we're gonna have to do two total budgets, one's gonna have to be, if it passes, and one's gonna have to be with six and a quarter million dollars in cuts. I mean, there's no two ways, we have to have that prepared way in advance of November, because $6 million, as you're well aware of, we, that's devastating the county government, we don't have the ability. We're gonna have to, 'cause we have to balance the budget, but that's going to have to be, I hope we can get together by the end of August, when we meet with all the elected officials after all the budget hearings, and say, okay, here's where we're at, here's what your needs are, here's the cuts you've come up with, now let's find another $5 million. And I don't think that's platable on any of us, and I don't believe the public will like what our final budget's gonna look like, 625 less, but I think that's what the Commissioners are gonna have to work on, and I think that five years gives us time to attrition out, and hopefully, some changes in state government, if they're going to take our money away from us, they need to change the laws to where they're not putting unfunded mandates on it. I mean, just so, Tim, we've got you here, Senate Bill 1, my discussions with, you know, Judge Zalesky, what's that gonna do to our court system?
It's gonna put a huge burden on it.
Oh, okay.
Huge burden, Hal, he said.
He said, Tim Looby, the Administrator for County Police Corps is gonna put a huge burden on it, burden on us with the four and fives coming back, and we, and speaking with the sheriff on that, it also means a large burden in regards to how we're going to treat and handle that clientele. I mean, we've had enough discussion, I know Tim's here to talk to us about the probation department, but again, who wants that clientele in their building, in the admin building, and who wants them in the Justice Center when you have probation people walking around? But again, that's a need that has to be addressed, I know Commissioner Williams has been working on that, I just don't think that three years gives us enough time to make enough structural changes to continue county government. I'm not arguing your point about three years may be easier with the taxpayers, but I think we still have a responsibility as elected officials, that we've gotta lay out a plan over a five-year period. We've always in the past looked forward until we've had these major cuts the last three or four years, and it seems like we're always by the seat of our pants trying to figure out how we're gonna get through this year's budget, so.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Kayla, my only concern is marketing it to the taxpayers, and that, and we can go for it a five-year, the question that I have is, what is more likely to be passed, a three-year or a five-year? Would you prefer to have a tax increase for three years and try to get through it, or do you think it doesn't matter, three or five?
I think this comes down to how we can campaign and get the message out, I think either one can be sold, and I'm not, won't argue that three-year might be easier for the voters, it's three years and they're right back up, so I mean, I can't make that argument with you as one or the other, I'm just stating my preference, as having sat here and had to go through the cuts many years, and eliminating the transits, and, you know, we're down past all those, what we call, not orphans, but I mean, the people that aren't mandated services, we're now down in all the mandated, so I'll take comments, if there's any elected officials here, I don't see other than Tim from, or someone from DR, I mean, is there a preference, what do you think we can do, is there a discussion? Again, you guys are all part of this process also, I was actually hoping we had some elected officials here to, you know, chime in, but we weren't fortunate enough to have that.
I mean, if a resident had the option between three and five years, of course, they're gonna take the three years, but is that gonna do what needs to get the job done? Is that gonna be enough to get the job done, is the question I have. I think just having it as temporary is enough to, whether it's three or five years, is enough to show them that we are going to be fiscally responsible, you know, if we need continued taxes in the future, that we'll have to come back to them, it's not a permanent fixed sales tax. So just the fact that it's temporary, and it's a quarter less than what we asked for before, hopefully, that will be enough.
Back to you, Commissioner Williams, we volley this situation.
Because if, I mean, if we put both of those on the ballot, they're either gonna say no to both of them, thinking that we want both of them.
There's always that option, I mean, we can't discount, we put three different scenarios out here, there is always that option, if we want to, as a unified Board, hopefully, we talk, if you wanna do a quarter percent three and a quarter percent five, leave it up to the voters as an option, but again, is that gonna be confusing and make everybody vote no?
Right. Like I said last week, the-
That's what would happen, they would vote no on everything.
Right, the property tax, like you said earlier, I had said it last week, is my favorite, I mean, because it gives people more flexibility on, you know, what they have to pay taxes on, and what they wanna pay taxes on, but I think it's confusing, and I think if we put two on there, it's confusing, so I think we need to be together on this, and just put one on, the one that we think is gonna get us through. And I mean, we still have to do cuts regardless of whether it's three or five, and we do have, like Mr. Kayla said, we still have to do a balanced budget, so part of educating the public is going to be that budget with that $6 million shortfall, it's gonna show what's going to be cut, and I don't think the residents of Lorraine County are gonna like what they see.
Well, I'll utilize your experience on this, the Board's experience, I mean, marketing-wise, I think the quarter at three years is something that we can, can get passed, I am concerned about going to the five, but if you feel that-
But you have to be confident, I mean, do you think we need five? I think you think we need five, right? It's just a matter of trying to sell it to the public, but if you believe that we need it, and we believe that we need it, then we should do that.
Well, no, there's no question that we don't need the quarter percent, like I said, there's cuts that we can make, however, coming up with the six and a quarter is gonna be very difficult to do, unless Mr. Cordez is willing to give back all his money, that's a joke.
Say no, Jim, just say no.
May pay the electric bill for a month.
But-
And then again, like Mr. Kayla said earlier, if all that revenue comes in, or if interest income takes a big uptick, you know, things like that, and money starts coming in, we could always kick that money back and say, hey, folks, we don't need it anymore, thank you, but, you know, we're good now.
So the, okay, let's say year three, that we have a carryover of, I'm dreaming here, but say $12 million, so we could actually eliminate these sales taxes for year four and five.
When people just love us, then?
Correct, you can roll back the quarter percent, it's a temporary, all sales tax are put locally on by the Board of County Commissioners, it is our tax, as we like to take ownership of this, we have the ability that if those revenues take up and investment income gets, and not knowing what's going to happen in Washington in the future, we have enough issues there, but those are all trickle-down effects to us, whatever happens, that if investment income were to go up, and there were additional revenues, you know, coming in, you can eliminate, there was an issue in '04 when Commissioner Kokoski and I were elected, but we're not yet in office, where two of the Commissioners, they were actually calling it Black Thursday at the time, were trying to roll back the half a percent, one a friend of yours, and one on our side of the aisle, that would've, you know, devastated county- That would have, you know, devastated county government. But I mean, it was, if all of you remember that happening back in the old days in '04, if those of you go back far enough. And it was a major issue in the county that we couldn't do that, but it was something that was happening up here.
That was our first cartoon. It was, it showed a Christmas present from David Moore to me and Ted. That was our first cartoon.
So, thank you, Chronicle.
Your buddy, Mr. Lynch.
But again, if those take up, we have the ability always to roll back. And I think just being responsible, the five-year outlook, because we're saying three years or five years, and we lay the numbers out. We're 1.6 short in three years. We're 3.5 or 3.7, I don't have the numbers in my package, short. Again, I think we can stretch out those cuts and show a long-term budget. I'm still hoping the Auditor's Office works us out a budget through 2012, but he has concerns about the reevaluation of our property tax and it dropping next year in 2012. For some of you who've come out of the Auditor's Office and know what the reevaluations are. I just think that gives us a better story to tell the public. Here's what we're looking at, here's where we're going, here's where we're going to be based on revenues currently expected. And anything on top of that would then give us the ability to roll back. If there's a twelve million carryover at the end of year three, then I'd be more than willing-
I mean, even an eight million dollar carryover. That would be basically additional year.
No, you'd probably need about nine and a half and nine and three quarters, because we learned over the years, it takes eight million bucks to open the doors on January 1st.
That was the number.
Because our tax receipts don't come in, we need eight million dollars.
To get us to February.
Commissioner Williams, your first time, this is your first year doing a full budget for everyone.
Correct.
To open the doors, there's always got to be that carryover. No, it's not money we have as extra. It's what gets held back through other departments to make that door opening, get through January and February till tax receipts start coming in.
Correct.
Okay.
And property taxes.
Okay, so-
I mean, are we agreed? Can we all live with the temporary quarter percent for five years as unified board? I don't want to do a split on the board because it's going to take all three of us and get this passed.
Right. I mean, knowing that if we go through and we have that type of carryover, that we can go ahead and-
Reduce.
Reduce it. Yeah, I'll go ahead and support the quarter percent at five years.
That's a motion. Would you like to second Commissioner Kokoski?
I'll second.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye. I'm with the agenda.
Mr. Cordes, County Commissioner?
I have no additional comments this morning.
Mr. Innes, Assistant County Prosecutor?
There is one matter regarding pending court action I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session.
Commissioner, your report.
No comments this morning.
Busy week, other than talking to everybody about sales tax around the county. Had a meeting last week, actually, we hosted it here. I chair the Emergency Food and Shelter Committee for the United Way and receive federal dollars in to help for emergency utilities, in my case. I chair the Utilities Committee. Judge Mihak actually chairs the entire committee. And we'll be meeting next Monday to go over those dollars. But we had a 40% cut from the feds in regards to emergency utilities for residents in the county.
How do they get that money?
It's through certain groups, no, it's through certain groups throughout the county that United Way funds. But that won't be released until after Monday's meeting. Also had the opportunity, myself, Mike Challander, Administrator Cordes, we met with Murphy Montler, the new Director of External Affairs for First Energy. Discuss Lorraine County in particular, what we've done in regards to energy efficiencies. And Mike and I had a very long, drawn-out conversation with Murphy Montler in regards to LeadCo and trying to get a power purchase agreement for the offshore wind. And actually, he's very familiar with it because he worked with that in Pennsylvania. When Pennsylvania took Gemesa, which is one of the largest wind manufacturers in the world, beat Ohio. So, he's real familiar with it.
Good to have on our side.
Well, it's nice to have him over here, correct. And then Relay for Life, like, think all the people from Lorraine Relay for Life. It's a shame we had to cancel it.
You did?
At six o'clock, yes, it came in, fifty mile an hour winds. I have never seen clouds like that in my life, like fingers off a hand dipping into the lake. Thought we were going to have water spouts, but we hope to reschedule the menorah ceremony somewhere. That's the end of my report.
I was having a birthday party for my grandson. He turned three years old. Can you believe he's three years old? He's so cute, too.
My granddaughter's three years and two months.
Yeah, I know. Just keep him away from, I'll keep him away from her.
Thank you.
Okay.
Follow that.
He's just a young guy here.
I'm happy to report I'm not a grandpa. No, a lot of talks with individuals about the sales tax and that, that going on, just trying to get people educated on there as far as the airport. And just even with the people believing that the sales tax is going to go in and basically affect the increase on our gasoline and things like that.
They don't understand.
But one, one positive thing, there's a Lorraine County resident, Megan, if you could come up to the podium. Megan is, well, I'm going to let her talk about it. She's fighting. Got a charity event for cancer. And Megan, Ernie, were you able to download that? Is that in the system?
Oh, sure.
Megan, if you could just state your name, your city, and then just tell us about the program.
Thank you. Megan Flanagan. I am from Grafton, Ohio. Been a Lorraine County resident all my life, minus the five or so years I was in school. At any rate, I participated in several things, several fundraisers for cancer. And it kind of started way back in, in school. I had a, you know, just a rough time fitting in school and so forth. And I had a classmate who, in addition to the typical school, you know, how you, how cool you are, how you dress, all that fun stuff. She was going through chemotherapy, lost her hair. And I really admired her for, wow, this is a really tough time in her life. And she has to deal with chemo and get good grades and so forth. And I always, I really admired her perseverance and her strength and determination. And she always just kept a positive attitude. And so I, I went away to college. I, I came back and I discovered these little 5K races everywhere for breast cancer, for prostate cancer. And so I started walking these races, which is just a flat fee, you know, you pay 25, $30. And then I started running. I finished running the 5Ks, 3.1 miles. I completed running and I, I kept wanting more. I was a swimmer in high school and I had a trainer who said, hey, why don't you try out some triathlons? So I'm like, oh, okay, you know, why not? So I did my first triathlon a couple of years ago. And a triathlon is a swim, bike, and run in that order. And it's, my first one was a sprint distance. It was a half-mile swim, 12-mile bike ride, and then a 3.1 mile run. Wow, that was fun. And then I started doing some more research. Is there any way that I can do triathlons and fight cancer at the same time? And then I came across the team in training. And team in training provides, they have a north, a Northern Ohio location, which is located in Beechwood. And they have online coaching programs. They have a great social atmosphere. They get together all over the northern part of Ohio to train. And you can participate in anything from the marathon, half marathon, triathlons. They have opportunities to go to races all over the country. So I decided to go ahead and sign up for the Greater Cleveland Triathlon. And I did that last year. I did the sprint distance and I raised over $2,000 for the Lymphoma Leukemia Society. So, and I, you know, always want to keep challenging myself and do more, do more. This year, I decided to do the Olympic Distance Triathlon, which is basically double everything. So it's just short of a mile swim, it's a 24-mile bike ride, and then it's a six-mile run. So I'll have that coming up here on August 7th. And I'm looking to raise over $1,000 for that race. The, the team in training is specifically for the Lymphoma Leukemia Society. I've had a grandpa die from leukemia and I have two aunts are in remission from lymphoma and a coworker as well. But like I said, it doesn't matter what cancer it is. I do the Susan G. Komen Race every year as well. I've had many friends, family, coworkers, all bullied by, by cancer. And so I tried to fight back in any, any way that I can. You know, I'm not a, I'm not a doctor. I can't find a cure, but I know that I can raise money. And also in my training, I do a lot of the biking, obviously, in Lorraine County. And since I'm doing more mileage and stuff, it's just, it's really nice to see how our parks are and to, you know, venture out into Oberlin and Grafton Township, not Vermilion. Lorraine County, I think, is a great place to do the training. And of course, we have Lake Erie as well. So that, so that is kind of what I am doing.
Megan, could you go ahead and just scroll down on the monitor there so we can see your page?
Oh, okay. This is just some basic information about the Lymphoma Leukemia Society, which was founded in 1949. And at that time, the survival rate was basically zero. You didn't, it was a death sentence. And since then, through all of their donations and investments, 2010, they invested $72 million in blood cancer research. And now it's not a death sentence. We can fight it. Back in nineteen, the late 1970s, my grandpa died. He didn't have a chance. But my two aunts were able to take chemo therapy and were able to fight it. And here's the team in training. They've trained nearly half a million runners, walkers, triathletes, cyclists, and hikers, and have raised over a billion dollars to fund cancer research. And there's several events that you, that you can choose from. And here's my contact information. And on Facebook, I have a page, it's called Blue, which stands for Believe, Love, Understand, and Empower. And just to wait up, follow me and all my crazy training. This past weekend, I was out riding my bike for my longest ride. I did 45 miles in the Grafton, well, not all in Grafton, but out in Lorraine County. And, you know, the whole time, I'm thinking, you know, the, the cancer patients who are going through chemotherapy, they don't get to take a break because it's too hot. So, you know, I'm going to go ahead and do this and not take a break. It was really hot.
Megan, I want to thank you for coming up here, telling us about the program and that. And when is the race that you're participating in?
August 7th.
August 7th, so we'll pray for a nice, cool day for you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good luck with everything, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations, very good cause. My family's involved with the Relay for Life we had for the last six years in Lorraine, so very important. Actually, they gave numbers the other day, the first five years of Relay. We've raised over $188,000 for cancer research for Relay for Life in Lorraine. Should be another 40 or 50 this year despite the poor weather, so.
Oh, yeah. There's great, great opportunities to, to get out. Exercise, you're fighting a good cause. And there's, there's so many different organizations to help as well.
My youngest daughter's done that three-day walk before.
Oh, wow, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's a killer. Thank you very much.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, enter report.
Madam Clerk?
Tomorrow, we'll have our meeting at the IAC Center at Lorraine County Community College at 9:30. August 3rd, 9:30 will be the board meeting here, 10 o'clock Prosecutor's Budget, 12 o'clock Coroner's Budget. August 10th, 9:30 Board Meeting here, 10 o'clock Sheriff's Budget. August 17th, 9:30 Meeting here, 10 o'clock Treasurer's Budget, 11 o'clock Auditor's Budget, 12 o'clock Board of Elections Budget, and 1 o'clock Recorder's Budget. We are also sending various declarations to various employees, Job and Family Services. Nat Rodriguez, 28 years of service. Louis Teiser, 20 years of service. Jim Lampowski in the Treasurer's Office, 17 years. Janet Ethet, 30 years in the Data Department. And Betty Brannick, 16 years in the Auditor's Office. Board Correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board? Hi, David.
Commissioners, David Ashenhurst Oberlin. I'm, I'm very happy to be able to do this in such short order. I apologize for my lateness and my colleague's absence. That's what happens when you move it to Tuesday. People have longstanding things of other things. And I'm afraid I have to leave instead of staying for the hearings later. But I have seen some of the presentations now on television and it's, they're, they're good. They're substantive. They can be followed by the general public. I think you've made the right decision about what to put on the ballot. And I want to just follow up very briefly on my comments last week that said, please substantively inform the public. In, in a free newspaper in Oberlin called The Advocate, which is a sort of consolidated version of the Wellington Enterprise and Amherst News Tribune, and it's for people who don't get the Oberlin News Tribune, there was a, an insert this past Monday. And I have it here and I'm going to leave this one with you. Excuse me. This is eight pages. The only advertising in it outside of Lorraine County is by the Centers for Disease Control. There are three ads by them. This is brought to you by the Lorraine County General Health District, the Lorraine City Health Department, and the Elyria City Health Department. That means the combined health departments of Lorraine County. Now, I don't know about Lorraine and Elyria, but I know the General Health District is levy-funded. I know they don't have a levy on the ballot immediately. But somehow, they have found a way of using governmental funds to put information in the public's hands. I wouldn't recommend you put something with this much fluff in it. But as they say, if, if you use something like this during these, and, and maybe we're already too close to a sales tax vote, but I encourage you to ask Mr. Innes, what can we say about, in terms of general information about county finances before the, you know, some calendar date? Maybe, maybe in time for the county fair. You have, you've still got several weeks to do that. Something that's been invented since, you know, I mean, just in the last 10 years, is frequently asked questions. You get to ask the questions you hope other people ask and answer them before they ask them. That's a nice, and if you do some content in a format like this and are able to put it on, you know, PDFs so people can put it on their, you know, link to it and things like that. I don't think this has to be very expensive, but I do think more information has to get out there. I was with Commissioner Williams and Assistant Prosecutor Innes at the Townships Association meeting last week. We had a presentation from Heidi Faunt of the Ohio Township Association. And she gave, in about five pages, all of the impacts of the state budget on townships. It, it just, it's hugely informative. And it's a list you can go back to for months as, as you try and sort things out. I would encourage you to put some information that people could mine for a long period of time. If you can do the printing before whatever, you know, deadline there is for being able to talk about county finances before this election comes up. You don't even have to do it in terms of the impact of the sales tax. Just tell people how the whole thing works. And I know you can get it into eight tabloid pages this size. They can do it with, under a governmental mandate. I think you guys can do it. I know that there's no party funds for an issue, but something should work. Jerry?
Jerry, could we do something like that, as long as we don't like put vote for, you know, can we just put an informational piece together? We're using governmental funds?
You're allowed to do purely informational things.
As long as you don't put vote for or something.
As long as it's not done in a, right, something that advocates passing the levy.
Okay.
You, you can do something that explains the reason for the levy and what it is and what it does.
Well, at this point, some response, now that we've got it passed, Theresa, we'll go to the board of elections. And when will we have language, Jerry, approximately? Second week of August with a number on it, third week of August? Is it gonna be later?
Yeah, something like that.
Because.
What day will they certify for the ballot?
August tenth, so I should have it like maybe a week or two out of that.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. So then, I think at this point, the board's job is to garner all that information, especially in light of the budget hearings, and working on those dual budgets. And like I said, in the past, two years ago, we did the informational packet at the county fair, explaining what was going to happen, you know, if it didn't pass, and where we followed through with those issues. And then we probably need to work on forming some type of citizens committee to get this passed. So I think that'll be the job of the commissioners to start working on probably immediately. So that's the end of my comments. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Tim, you had some issues.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Looby, on behalf of the General Division Common Police Court. I worry that you guys are gonna come to associate with me with all kinds of woes and costs and stuff like that, but.
You're a poster child, Tim.
Absolutely, well, in some respects, I guess it's good that we're, that, I would love to avoid some of these things, particularly these economic times, but we can't. And it's better that the public understand what is in front of you as well as them than we kind of hide these things, and that's what we can't do. This is something that's been kind of an issue for many years. I started working on this about two years ago, which is the probation department and their physical location. They're housed for, for members of the public in the old common police court. It wasn't an ideal space when we moved them there, but it was a economical and a feasible one at that time. The building has been deteriorating for many years, even before the court left it. It is an old structure, it has significant leaking problems, it has rodent infestation. Over the last year, two year and a half, it's developed some severe mold problems. And because of the nature of the work performed by the probation department, it also has security issues for them. Commissioner Williams was kind enough about two weeks ago to tour that facility, and I think it impressed upon him somewhat the dire nature of, of those conditions. As a result of that meeting, we started having conversations with Karen Davis and started to look at some other building locations. One of those being the administration building. As part of our conversations, we wanted to keep all options on the table. I, I want to make it abundantly clear, the court's not advocating that we have a wonderful, brand-new facility for our people. We just need an appropriate, reasonable facility so they can do their jobs. And so we looked at the administration building. Karen also proposed the concept of trying to rehab the old courthouse. Ultimately, we're running into a problem where we don't want to spend a lot of time and resources until we get some clearer direction as to what the commissioners would like to do. Because ultimately, facilities is the commissioner's decision, not the court's. So we would, I would like to put kind of in front of the commissioners and ask the commissioners their thoughts, not necessarily today, but to get this ball moving forward and see which direction the commissioners want to move, whether it be to locate us in the, the administration building, whether it's to perform probably very substantial remodeling to the old courthouse, or even find another structure that might be available and economically feasible. But I just, just wanted to move this ball forward, so to speak.
How many square feet are you looking?
You know, Karen Davis has those, Commissioner. We would ultimately be looking to, we could diverge some of the functions. The lab doesn't per se have to be physically connected to the rest of the probation department, but one of the problems we're running in right now is we have the PSI unit located separately and apart from the rest of the probation department. And when you're trying to manage two physical separate locations, it takes resources that you perhaps don't have to do that. So we'd like to bring everybody together. We can give you, Karen Davis could provide you with the actual square foot requirements as well as all.
I believe it was around three thousand, Tim, is what it was.
Mr. Cordez, is there any more space available at the Columbia Gas Building or at the Transportation Center?
There's no space at the Transportation Center. It was never made to be a big office area. The Columbia Gas Building, depending on what the board used, so far, we're using it for six different things.
Right, but if we pulled some of those people over here.
Or in the case of.
Like the building department, people, bring them over here and free up space for them?
Well, we, if I can.
Please.
We, we're looking at that actually, and I don't know if we can get both probation and the crime lab in there. So we're looking at putting the crime lab over into the Columbia Station Building and then putting the probation, one of the talks that we have is actually down on the lower level.
No, I would like to make, I really don't want probation in this building. I would rather seen it, we leave the corners where he's at for thirteen thousand a year, less build out and combine probation all in.
In the Columbia, I don't think it would work.
If there's enough square footage.
Well, even if we can move the corner somewhere else, but, I mean, because we're talking, looking at, I think Keith knows this, if not, you can hear it now, that we're talking about moving you over to the recycled center. He's nodding his head, so it's not a shock to him, but.
Who's this weak kemosabe?
Ultimately, Commissioners, I could see, I would like to step out at this point in time, I could see.
Maybe one of those roses that you're talking about's in his pocket.
I've now created an issue and I wish to walk away.
I'm just taking the initiative, that's all.
But ultimately, I would like to perhaps come back next week if that's feasible, just to see what the commissioners thoughts are.
Just open up that can and we're gonna walk away, right?
Absolutely, and really just to kind of.
I think, Tim, it's probably more of an issue as we're working forward with everybody else's budget yet.
Yep.
I don't think it's a.
A quick decision.
Emergency at this point.
Okay.
And we're talking about capital movement of people and relocation of people. And it was discussed with the policy committee about possibly putting solid waste out at the collection center. But again, because of the shortfall in available dollars for capital, because we're off so far this year, because since the economy is down, there's less garbage, there's less tipping fees, we've got a major shortfall. I don't know if we have the capital dollars to expend in that, especially in regards to what we're doing with the EPA currently and not knowing how that's going to end up, correct, Mr. Cordez?
It is, you're gonna be briefed by counsel again on some issues.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's part of the litigation, I mean, Tim, no offense, and I understand the issues over there, and I talked with Bart, and, you know, we've had the dialogue up here. I just don't know if it's something in the next ninety days that will be at the top of the commissioner's agenda to address. As I said, I would have to look to the facilities, talk to Karen Davis, get your square footage requirements, get the amount of capital cost to do this, you know, because we are short on dollars. And I really, I don't think the probation department belongs in the administration building, no different than, the Justice Center didn't want the probation department inside it because of the type of clientele walking through, so.
Well, we would actually, that would be an option we would be more than happy to consider. As it was explained to us, it was a, a cost issue there, but by all means, actually, if the commissioners were willing to consider that, it would be a very appropriate, I mean, that population is something that's already coming through the court.
Right.
So you're used to having them, our building here with, you know, the auditor's office paying taxes and the public up here with the, you know, sheriff sale, I mean, we have a lot, the economic development, I don't want to see probation or crime lab up with our economic development. We spent a lot of time, and actually, last night, at the City of Lorain Council meeting, I was told Karen Kreischer, who is the health source, they're moving a new business into Lorain, actually said she started out her quest, because she had spoke to me about a year and a half ago, about locating there, and I had referred her over for available properties with Team Lorain County, she actually mentioned that last night in her statements, I was told. So I don't think the crime lab and/or the probation department up in our Economic Development Center is probably the best use of that square footage.
Well, we're actually talking about the lower level now, because of that concern with the diner being gone and taking that area over, but this areas, we can talk about Karen's going through, taking a look, she's got your requirements.
Ultimately, the problem we ran into, Commissioner, was that Karen wasn't able to move forward at all because she would go and say, well, one commissioner is telling me this space is allocated here, another commissioner is telling me to use this space, and so we were chasing our tail. And Commissioner, I, I respect that this isn't something that's gonna happen overnight. And ninety days is more than reasonable for you guys to dwell on this. My only point to, to make was, we started this over two years ago, and it wasn't dire then, but it truly is. I mean, the mold is ridiculous, the rodent infestation is to the point where we are jeopardizing the prosecutor's ability to bring cases. Those all have economic ramifications and I, I'm truly, probation has always been a redheaded stepchild in our organization, and I'm not here asking that they receive palatial accommodations, but they need to be able to do their job, and that really is being impacted now.
Well, I think probably the best direction, we probably give this to the county administrators, have Karen Davis give us all the possible options that get presented to the commissioners, so we have everything that you've looked through with Commissioner Williams so far. We're not shared that, so as of yet, because I know it's preliminary, so I mean, but if they've got certain options and certain build-out costs, we've got to be very cap, because we don't have capital dollars.
I understand.
I will, I will talk to each one of you individually. The problem with giving you what's available is exactly what Mr. Looby just alluded to. Why didn't he even allude to it? He said it outright. You all got different opinions, I don't know what to give you when three people are asking for different things and when, you know, we're juggling so many departments. Now, if Columbia Gas Building's in play, I need to know what to do with the coroner's office. You guys have previously told me that the coroner's office was moving in there, and we had stepped back from that because of the change administratively, but I understood that later this summer, I was to revisit that issue with regards to relocating of the coroner's office.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if, then if we're considering a probation department, we're combining it with the PSI, that then we not consider moving the coroner's office and for the thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars, we don't have any space, we've torn down buildings.
You, you could, you could have some problems with probation in the, the building over here on, or the former. Third Street.
Okay.
The, the, I don't know if you see how many people cluster sometimes around the back of the courthouse. There really isn't that space over there for them to do that.
For that traffic flow.
You got, there's sometimes a lot of people out there. So there's something to think about, it's simply not a matter of, is there a place we can throw a desk in and squeeze somebody in? We got a customer service function.
Yep.
That, that needs to be performed also over there. Plus, I would also like to point out that that building is fully a glass-contained building. If there's security issues, that's not a building that I would want to be in if, if something was gonna happen. It's three hundred and sixty degrees, just about glass.
Yep.
So, and that building doesn't meet ADA requirements, just so you know.
That's a build-out cost, correct? That's.
No, it's not a build-out cost, it's something that can't be accomplished.
Really?
Unless you're gonna put an elevator in that small, two-story building, that limits our availability on some of the space that we can use. We've used it before, and we've made accommodations for moving the services when necessary, but when you do a, we didn't do a high-volume service business like adult parole does at times.
Yep.
So all those considerations weigh into any potential changes in the space and what it's gonna be used for. The coroner's office didn't provide a lot of customer service support, so we didn't really have as much concern with an ADA issue, and they could actually meet with somebody in a lobby area, so that, that diminished that overall need there. But again, the programming and the space would have to go hand in hand with what we can accomplish.
Tim, not to interrupt, you presented to us, we've got an investment advisory committee and.
I have a question though.
Okay, go ahead.
Did you say that the courts are not opposed to probation going over into the Justice Center? And is there space?
Not at all, Commissioner, we would actually, that was one of the options we asked to be considered.
And there's space available for that?
You would have to build out the fifth floor, so it would have econo, I think ultimately, you're gonna have, there's economic implications here probably that are gonna override anything else. There's cost, and I would love to tell you that I have sources and funds, I don't. But this condition can allow, just be, you know, we've got to do something about it.
I mean, you have security there, you have the deputies, you have the, it would probably be a good fit for that.
It's about a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot to build out, right?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna invest money in this, because I think any option's gonna require a capital investment, I'd look at the Justice Center. You're gonna spend the money, so you might as well form, you might as well form what is as close as reasonably possible to a permanent solution, rather than a temporary solution that we're gonna have to revisit in, in a short amount of time.
It could be probation, crime lab, coroner, all within the Justice Center if that was our.
Sure, I, I, I remember back when we, when we were rejigging the, the Justice Center. I was the only one out of the four of us that was here. And there was some concerns with adult probation in the Justice Center that were voiced by some of the people, not all of them, in, in the court system because of the, the volume of clientele and there was all, you know, a lot of the people visiting the courts are dual with both systems, but not all of them. There were some concerns about that, and when the, the first people moved out of the Justice Center when that opportunity was available, it was adult parole, they were supposed to be in there, they, they were concerned effort to move them out. I'm not saying that everybody had a problem with them being in there, but there was a faction that did. Then we tried to move them to some buildings we had on Middle Avenue that we wanted to renovate at the time, and we were told, and, and I worked on this, we were told that that's too far away. So they didn't want to renovate those buildings, and they sat vacant for five years, and we ended up tearing them down. So I mean, there's been multiple scenarios with this, and the courthouse was actually specifically requested by the courts, and we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that to move them into that courthouse, because they said they wanted them that close to, to Justice Center. So there was money expended, you know, just several years ago to accomplish that, even though, you know, the building was in a, what I would call depleted condition at that time, too. But I think you need to find a permit solution, not one where we stuffed them somewhere and then in three years from now, we're, we're looking for another move.
Yeah, I think that's inefficient and ineffective.
But I, I, I think you and I have to have dialogue with our superiors to make sure that they adequately know what we're, if we move them in there, what we're going to accomplish, and the, the traffic volume will increase exponentially.
I'm, I'm more than happy on the, from the Justice Center side to talk to all the tenants there and get confirmation that that would be acceptable or resolve those issues, if that is a viable option.
You and I will sit down and talk, okay?
The next ninety days, you need to go down to the APL and pick up a couple cats.
I already have one and a dog.
No, for the building.
For the building? Oh, to kill rodents?
To get rid of the rodents.
They'd have to be to jump, because we also have, when I say rodents, we also have bats. So we have all kinds of fun critters in that building.
Yeah, my concern though is actually the, the lab itself, as far as using an air conditioner unit to keep a quality control lab.
Yeah.
I mean, window unit on that, so. Now, with the Justice Center, I mean, we talked about that, the reason that floor is vacant right now is for future growth of the courts.
Yes.
So if we take that and we put them over there.
Depends on how much square footage. We have, we built the Justice Center out to twenty twenty-five with the vacant floor. We have the potential for locating at least two more courts on the fifth floor. The, and still have available space. You have how many, you have four on each floor, right?
Four on each floor.
So we, are we ever gonna need four more courtrooms? I, I find it highly unlikely in the next fifteen years.
Based on case volumes, I'd have to agree with you. In fact, we would not be, yeah, in the next twenty years, you're probably not gonna see an increasing case volume that would justify anywhere near two new courtrooms.
Right, if we were maintaining enough for two courtrooms, I think we still have great potential for future demand within that building that'll exceed any of our times here and still be able to possibly accomplish what you want. And I'm not advocating you do that, I'm only suggesting that I've participated in too many temporary fixes that cost us more money because we kept temporary fixing it over and over again. And if you want to do this and you feel the need to do it, we should explore some permit solutions.
If you want to do it right.
Yep, yeah, and just to say, we, we really, other than the, the specific mandate for the job, the court's very open to whatever the commissioners are willing to consider. We, we don't want to dictate to say that we gotta have this, we gotta be here. I mean, there are certain requirements, it's gotta have security, it, it does have to be physically close to the court because of the population we're dealing with. Other than that, we're, we're working with whatever the commissioners will give us.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim.
Did you get any chance, Tim, to find out what the cost savings would be with shutting down the old courthouse? No, I have, I have, I didn't know we were gonna get to this this quick, I saw on one of those lists of.
All right.
It's in the pile.
The piles are smaller, but they're still piles, but if we need that pretty quick, I can, I can lasso that up.
When it's convenient, Jim, I'll meet with you and we can talk further. Thank you, Commissioners.
Any other comments? To make a motion to go executive session is outlined by the county prosecutor and county administrator.
Second?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
All right, the board of commissioners convened for Lorain County Clerk of Courts budget hearing. It's your floor, Mr. Navakowski?
Thank you, sir. Enough commercial. Back in the good old days, this is what the revised code looked like. When I was city auditor, it had grown to about five or six volumes. This is what it looks like today. Additional mandates placed on our office by these statutes are too numerous to mention here, but there are over a thousand specific mandates for the clerk of courts to meet. And were met by the legal division. We received money. We receive monies for operation from the general fund. Uh, we serve as the administrative arm of both the Courts of Common Pleas and the Court of Appeals, Ninth District Court of Appeals by receiving and filing and docketing and processing all case documents. Uh, we register and maintain the notary public commissions for all county residents. That's almost two thousand people last year. And we send conviction and driver's license suspension from information on escalating misdemeanors and other things to various state agencies and boards of elections. We collect court costs, fines, fees and restitution, distribute that money to appropriate agencies and individuals. We assist genealogists in their research, provide property title examiners and attorneys and public access to case documents that they need. We maintain the court's docket and electronic case management system. What are court costs? Court costs are those money assessed to parties who represent statutory or the actual cost, statutory cost of providing a particular service. Security deposits are posted by parties in civil and domestic relations matters to ensure that court costs are covered. We charge three hundred dollars, I think, for filing a case in our civil division, um, five hundred and seventy-five for a foreclosure case. Uh, and that money, we of course, invest for the general fund as, as does Dan on the other side. Fines and fees are typically collected by our office, transmitted to other agencies on a monthly basis. We're permitted to keep a small amount of that compensation, which goes to the general fund as poundage. Restitution, we do collect and we just redistribute it to, uh, victims. Since two thousand, our common pleas judges have ordered convicted criminal defendants to pay a total of fifteen million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, sixty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents in court costs, fines, attorney fees and restitution. And despite our best efforts and continuing efforts, the total amount collected on those eight thousand some cases is of one point eight million to date. Averages out to about two hundred and thirty dollars a case. Individuals with prior felony convictions often, almost always lack the means to pay because they cannot obtain employment or are incarcerated for long sentences. There are capital bases where the court costs, et cetera, run to two to three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we rarely collect anything once we've executed somebody. These costs, of course, are borne by taxpayers out of the cost of administering justice. How do we bring money to the general fund? We collect the court costs and the poundage is dictated. Two years ago, we contracted with a collections firm to pursue delinquent accounts for criminal and domestic relations cases, which we cannot recover, uh, where we can't, we can't recover the money within ninety days. We kind of, we do some collection on our own. We have a person dedicated specifically to that. We collect what you saw, we collect, uh, but after that point, the, the collection is stale and we allow a company to collect it for us and they get to add twenty-five percent. They can add up to thirty percent, but I only let them take twenty-five percent additional for collecting. Two thousand and three, our office negotiated to receive an additional fee from the notary commission to provide notarial services above and beyond our delegated duties.
How, how are those collection agencies doing with collecting those fees that were stale?
Well, it's, it's not exciting. No, it's nothing to brag about, but it's, you know, it's better. It doesn't cost us anything, so it's the best we can do. Um, for the years two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, the legal division paid into the general fund a total of two million, two fifty-four. Uh, in two thousand and eleven, we're on track to collect a million four. So, we're looking better on the revenue side than we were in the past. Our general fund expenditures have decreased, I can't read this. You can't read that either. Second. Excuse me. Old eyes. Thank you. Um, actual expenditures in, in, in oh nine were one million, fifty-eight thousand plus change, uh, in two thousand and ten, and we were down to nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, an eight percent cut. Um, our contract services went from thirty-six thousand some to twenty-eight thousand, twenty-one percent reduction and our travel and staff was six sixty-five to five sixty, sixteen percent reduction. So, we've been cutting things as much as we can on the home front. We've obtained sa, these savings in the following ways. First, we've received monies from the court foreclosure special projects fund. The court shares, helps us to fund a department. We created a special department just for foreclosures and out of the foreclosure, uh, fee, uh, we're paying those people. We renegotiated and discontinued several vendor contracts and maintenance agreements. We've had a lot of staff attrition who haven't been replaced and in some cases we had to replace people, will replace them obviously with people who make less money because they haven't been working for us for eighteen or twenty years as the people who retired were. And we deferred purchases of office equipment and software. Since I beclaimed clerk in two thousand, my office has experienced a twenty-three percent reduction in staff while our caseload has increased by thirty-seven percent. Now, you add those two numbers, twenty-three and thirty-seven, you get sixty and it has nothing to do with anything, but everybody on our staff has been looking for some way to make something out of it. It really hasn't. But obviously, we're, we're doing more now with less. And I would argue that the problem with the county is not that we charge too much, not that it's caused too cost, costly, but that the services are too low. Uh, it really irritates me when I get gripes about not opening until ten o'clock in the morning. Um, we've laid off six deputy clerks in two thousand and nine. It became necessary to shorten our hours. Uh, we, we don't open till ten. We don't answer the phone till ten. Uh, our clerks are busy inputting as much information as they can before, uh, the necessary inconveniences of, of talking to attorneys, notaries, examiners, customers and the courts, which takes up the rest of the day. Legal Division employees have had to double up on job duties. Our administrative staff does pitch in wherever it's necessary. You'll often find Sally Pack, uh, or the others out airing data into the computer when they have important jobs, administrative jobs of their own to do. The judges and their staff cannot rule on motions until they've been processed by our office. Our backlogs are slowing down the courts. How have cost-saving initiatives affected the work in our office? Providing a two thousand and twelve budget request, which is reflecting our actual necessary expenditures. Again, now here are the estimated revenues, clerk fees. We look to take in nine hundred thousand next year for fines, fees and forfeitures, three hundred thousand. Interest, deposit investments, about ten thousand and postage reimbursements, two hundred thousand. That's a million four. On the expenditure side, oh God, I can't read much of that, but it comes to a million four and twenty-one. So, we're almost, we almost collect enough money to fund our office, not quite.
Can you go back to that one slide on the salaries, wages and employees? They got it exhibited here that you had it at one point one million. You're down to just over a million. Um, it's these, um, second one, salary, wages and employees. Now, I'm looking at the two thousand and eleven department expenditures for that. That was under eight hundred thousand. So, you're going up an additional two hundred thousand dollars. Why is there an increase?
I also, I think what you have on your slide, Ron, is not what I received and made for your two thousand and twelve budget package. Have you made adjustments to it since you submitted it? Oh, okay. Because I didn't get those changes.
Because we're estimating, we have some retirements, so.
Okay.
We have some retirements, so maybe we'll be able to get by with this, a bit of this. It's not that much.
What's the difference? Eight hundred, what was it?
Uh, basically eight hundred to now you're over a million.
Oh, Jesus.
From the two thousand and eleven.
Looking at your two thousand and eleven budget. I'll wait. We're given seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, about eight hundred thousand dollars in salaries. And for two thousand and twelve, you're asking for one million, twenty-five thousand. You're transferring a lot of funds up to cover your salaries.
We're re, we're trying, we bill the, uh, Court of Common Pleas, Tim Looby, on a quarterly basis and they reimburse us, reimburse us. So, for some reason or another, we're not changing, we're not adding anything. In fact, the budget's lower this year than last year.
It's a matter of when, um.
You need the microphone. Sorry, Lisa, yeah.
Or just come up to that.
I feel like doing karaoke.
She's got a really cute outfit on, you might as well show it off.
Thank you. Um, it's a matter of when the courts reimburse from the foreclosure account and the clerk of courts deposits those funds, they then appropriate them. So, that seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar figure that they were given for their budget, they're, they're still transferring funds up to cover their payroll and whatnot.
Right. So, they're balanced. That doesn't represent the expenditure.
That's not an actual expense, that's a budget figure.
Is the overall budget the same or more?
Yes, a little less.
Or less?
It's a little less, yeah, because we've had a couple retirements.
I don't have these changes that are up here.
The overall budget.
That's why you guys don't have that copy, because I didn't get that.
Got it. It really gets confusing the way counties do, because the city of Lorain didn't do it that way when I was city auditor, but the way we do reimbursement, we don't, everything goes through a long pipeline here. It has to go through the auditor's office, then it comes up to you guys, maybe it goes to Jim Cortez and it goes to you and then something else and then things get appropriated. It's a very long and, and torturous process and it, and it really, it impacts when you're looking at studies of, of what happened at any particular part, it, it's confusing. It's hard for me to keep track and in fact, a couple times, we've been late and almost couldn't pay people because the process hadn't gone through. I had a, I had a three-part form in the city auditor's office in Lorain. Something like that would happen, I'd fill out the form, one went to this fund, one went to here, blah, 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 and they all got posted and happened the same day. I don't know. Today, here, county government must be, there's some legality somewhere that creates a lot of bureaucracy. Uh, Mr. Looby said that we don't control the caseload, but we do have to process it. Obviously, this is also our dilemma. Resources dwindle, but legal mandates and statutory timelines fail to account for it. We work in partnership with the courts, the sheriff's department, prosecutor's office, then the judicial system stakeholders to move cases through the system as efficiently and economically as possible. And I will tell you that, here I'm going, getting off the record again, but if we had, if we had the situation that I had when I first came here, I'm sure the prosecutor's office, sheriff's office and our office would be working probably with the recorder's office to solve a problem that I saw the other day in Lorain and I'm sure in Alaria, where banks have a foreclosure, the man is in bankruptcy, uh, the bank never takes title to the property because they're going to have to pay somebody to mow the lawn, et cetera, and you have a neighborhood full of these junky houses. Now, there should be a way to solve this, but I don't have staff, prosecutor doesn't have staff, sheriff's department doesn't have staff. We really can't work on this problem very much. So, as far as I'm concerned, it's the county's being underserviced and I know it's not overcharged. We're writing down our, similarly situated, we're going to be comparison of similarly situated clerk of courts, clerks of court, courts. There we go. Uh, we compare ourselves with fi, with four other counties. We're, we're smaller than Butler and Stark and we're larger than Lake and Mahoning, we're right in the middle. Those are the population numbers. Uh, we compile the number of judges in each court. We're again right in the mil, well, we're not in the middle, we're at the top. We have, we have six general division, three domestic relations division, plus Court of Appeals. So, we service ten different courts, uh, which is as many as Butler and more than Stark. Uh, in the cases filed statistics, this comes from the, the report given to the Supreme Court, uh, on a regular basis, um, you can see that we're right in the middle at sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight. I can hardly see that. I would point out though, in the middle, uh, and this is where the money comes in, we're the highest in terms of criminal caseload. All of our judges have heavier criminal caseloads than any of the other states, um, any of the other counties. So, civil case category includes stalking petitions and foreclosures. Criminal includes extraditions. Domestic relations category includes domestic violence petitions and domestic support. Judgment liens includes state tax liens. We have a lot of all of that stuff, but especially the criminal side. We stay here for your edification and enjoyment, I guess, the Department of Labor's Bureau of State, Labor Statistics, uh, hourly percentile, sorry, it's tenth percentile, ten tw, ten seventy-six, thirteen fifteen, uh, mean hourly weight sixteen fifty, before we tell you what we're paying here. Uh, comparing ourselves again with those other four counties, uh, we're in the middle at eleven dollars and forty-six cents, um, mean hourly at fourteen dollars and thirty cents, again in the middle. Number of employees, I would point out, we have twenty-seven full-time employees, which is, um, I guess the, of the least, I think, about twenty-seven. We have two part-time employees, both retirees who came back and help us three days a week, catching up on some of the backlog stuff in areas where they know something, know a lot. Again, I, for the, for the population, for the caseload, for the number of judges that we have to service, um, it looks like a pretty good deal. Uh, there's the mean hourly weights, rates, again, we're in the middle. And there's the seniority because that, that affects how much you pay people. Obviously, we have a lot of people on your rate. We're, we're a little bit better because we've gotten some people to take early retirement. I'll tell you a little bit about the title division, since we're here. Uh, it's a non-general fund department, includes main office and administration buildings as well as Amherst, Lorain, North Ridgefield. Uh, we issue documentation of ownership and we also, we're limited authority deputy registrar in two of those offices, which is something we don't have to do, but we did to raise a few extra bucks. And we sell passports and do passport photos, which is something we do to make a few extra bucks. Uh, we processed one hundred and thirty-two thousand plus titles, uh, last year. We're in the top twelve. We processed seventeen hundred and twenty-six new passport, uh, books and, and card applications and we issued forty-six hundred odd registrations, license plates and temporary tags. In two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we gave a total of four hundred and fifty thousand to the general fund and we intend to give you more and will, um, when you need it. Predictions for our legal division and beyond. Although the foreclosure, foreclosure filings have been down in two thousand and ten, for the first, uh, four months of the year, five months, they were down thirty-five percent. In the fifth month, sixth month, they were down like six or seven percent. They bogged down our office, they are, uh, processing delays are starting to be part of our life again. The banks, because of the robo-scandal, they were cheating terribly on, on how they did foreclosures. They slowed down and they're trying to correct their, uh, their errors. Uh, this is a quote from, this is from Realtrack, Realty Track. "We estimate that as many as one million foreclosure actions that should have taken place in two thousand and eleven will now happen in two thousand and twelve or perhaps even later." Uh, and we're getting them heavily now. We've been getting them the last few weeks. I went, looked today and there's, uh, we're starting to look like we did a couple of years ago with foreclosure cases sitting all over the place. Continued legislative changes will yield even more duties for this office. We anticipate a greater number of petitions to seal criminal records and judgment liens will be filed with our court as the economy continues to get depressed. Till the economy approves, the numbers of credit card cases we process, and they're getting as bad as foreclosures were, um, will be, will remain elevated as possible. Reductions to county safety forces may result in an increase for felony cases for us. We are preparing to scan and send appellate briefs electronically to the Court of Appeals in Akron. This will save money in postage and eventually will save a lot of precious storage space. We've got to be filling up Gates Building pretty soon because they're just, uh, my gals are coming in in jeans about every five weeks and getting packed up for Gates. We continue to pursue implementation of the e-certified mail. This is the third year we've been working on this damn thing, uh, but we'll get it sooner or later and, um, it's less costly, much less costly than, than certified mail. More interest from the Court of being docketed electronically, saving time. It's something we work with our, with our vendor and it is, it is making life a little bit easier around there. A county-wide integrated case management system will further improve efficiency and reduce paper and personnel costs. It's an idea, however, that's just in the discussion stage, but we're very hopeful that we can enter into an agreements with the other municipal courts, with the municipal courts and the common pleas court to develop a system that serves all of us and allows allows the courts to have faster information, better information, anything that would speed up the efficiency here and there. I guess that's it. Okay.
Any questions, Ford?
You said you were planning on giving money back to the general fund again in 2012. Did you give it to us yet this year, or you did at the beginning?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes.
We did.
200,000 at the beginning of this year?
100,000, yeah, right.
And then 2012, are you anticipating giving us back how much?
You know, we don't know. Yeah, I've explained it, the problem with this, this whole process of pay, pay-as-you-go, or, or user charges that pay, is that they're always great when you set them up, build a little bit of profit, and we can give you that profit because we don't need it to operate. And that'll happen for two or three years, but then it starts going down as, as other expenses start going up. And although taxes aren't going up very fast, everything else in the world seems to be, at least in my budget, so I don't know, but I think you can count on a few or $400,000 for the next two or three years, at least.
This one? This is title, I think.
What's that? Is this the title?
I think that's just title office.
Of course, it, you know, it's not just the title fees, we do, we did the original, we got into passports, we got into limited authority deputy registrar to avoid laying off people in the title offices. When the legislature passed the title fee increase, that took the pressure off us, but we'll continue to do those things, though we're not mandated, because it does provide money for you from the general fund, so.
Ron, do you happen to know the number that you are down in your budget from '07? I know you're down 23 percent in people, what's your budget drop, 20 or 22 percent similar to the Court of Common Pleas? You don't have a comparison?
I don't have it with me, no.
Are they about 22 or 23 percent down from four years ago, Lisa?
I'm sorry, Ted, I didn't know.
The difference in their budget from four years ago, most of the people are bringing us how much they've taken in cuts, but I'm assuming they're 22 or 23 percent down in their...
Yeah, I'm a hundred plus. Just this year.
Yeah.
The extra 5 percent.
That's just personnel cost, though, not the entire budget, are you talking about...
Four years?
Personnel, yes.
It's probably more than that, because we've made deeper cuts outside of personnel.
Are you talking about personnel, or are you talking about total budget?
Total budget.
They did some different...
I can get back to you on that, I'll get you...
Ron, your numbers are different, because you did some different moves outside of just the personnel and PRS cuts, correct?
Right.
Okay, that's, that's why I was asking what their number was, Commissioner, I was just, I know they did some different moves, Ron had explained to me one time before lunch or breakfast or something, so I was trying to see how much lower they were.
It's in the slides, too. We did a big cut in our contract services, 21 percent. I mean, negotiating.
Yeah, but that's just, that was...
And we have always...
That's either $9,000 salary, and the overall budget, how much? Percentage-wise, you can get that back, and now I'll have Lisa chase it all down, but I know you did some movements.
I will, and I will tell you that my predecessor, and I, I'm just as bad, I guess, we, when we split salaries between departments, we always benefit the general fund a little bit rather than the other funds, so. That's, that's always been the case.
I didn't know if you had a total number, because I'm sure Brad would be interested in that, because he quoted the other departments representing, what your total drop is, so. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I'm looking at the clerk of courts certificate to title fund. 2008, cash at, you had 43,000. 2009, it's 333,000. 2010, 625,000. Estimate for 2011, it's just under a million dollars.
What is it, what is it?
Lisa, do you have that?
Carryover?
Yeah, could you give that to... Neil, can you come up here and, do you know how to set that overhead up?
Who needs Ernie when we have Neil?
Well, we need Ernie.
Ernie's right behind you.
There's Ernie.
Coming in.
Neil, be careful, Ernie might get upset you playing with his toys over there.
Yeah, there's got to be another here and a while.
Lisa, could you give that to Neil and Ernie to put on there?
I still have the document you need. Still make those things.
Oh, that's a sales text. You could take that one off.
We don't need that one. Upside down.
There you go. Nice nails.
Can we see if you have a copy of that?
Do we have copies?
I can go run some, I didn't know.
Okay, go ahead, I just looked at, go ahead.
All right. So, in 2008, we had a $43,000 carryover, and that's fine, correct? And that is a carryover number. So, you project 2010, you had it...
Can I interrupt you about the carryover there? In 2008, we had a lot of money from the county.
You have to use the microphone, Sally. It's coming either up there, or, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to remind you that in 2008 was when the big budget cuts came, and we had the layoffs, and we...
That one's not hooked up right now.
I'm loud enough. Okay. The end of 2008 is when we had the layoffs, everybody was laying off everybody. We did not have enough money in the title fund, and I remember calling Lisa and going, "Oh, my God, Lisa, we don't have enough money," and the county commissioners loaned us money. This was county commissioners' money that we paid back the next year after we got some more income, because traditionally, in the winter, we don't get as much income, naturally, people aren't buying cars, so part of that money was your money to begin with.
I don't recall when they came to us, we...
About $30,000, yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I think they did. I think we took it out the following year for some reason.
We did?
But in 2009, you had a $333,000 carryover, correct?
Right.
Now, with your carryover, 40-year, what do you try to go, two or three months to cover?
I don't think we, we don't really manage it.
Okay.
That's what it is.
You're, you're looking at your expenditures, I believe, for a month, pay run as about 52,000, 55,000, is that correct?
Close enough.
Okay. I'm, what I'm looking at, Mr. Navikowski, is the, with such a large projection in 2011, can we get that money, a good portion of that money back this year now? I mean, I don't want to take it where you're not going to have enough carryover to begin the year, but I mean, if you're looking at a million dollars, I'm thinking that...
We're, we're very happy to cooperate with you.
Okay, so I mean, is it possible that we could get 700,000 back?
It would be absolutely possible, yeah.
Okay.
Especially if you really need it. If you're carrying over cash sums in excess of four or five million dollars. As city auditor, we carried over 2 million dollars, we were very happy, so.
Well, that's our concern, I think Tom's bringing that up, Nappi, is we're looking at doing that dual budget for next year.
I mean, I think, you guys, you're going to get budgets, anytime you need information from us, you know what's here. You give me a call, and we'll talk.
Okay.
I'm more than happy.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the numbers, I don't know all the details.
I transmitted money last year, and then I wondered, well, I did that, made Betty feel good, because she used to give me hell, because Don used to do it and I didn't, but it didn't have any effect, I mean, you guys are not at the point yet where you're underwater, so.
We're getting really close.
We're close. 2012 is underwater.
You know where the money is, it's not like it's going away.
Well...
And you have to program my funds, so you're not going to let me go out and hire 15 more people and whatever, so. Yeah, so, you know, that money's there, I think it will be there. I don't know what, double dip in the recession, it may not all be there. We really can't plan on those things. I'll tell you a couple of rules of thumb, when we hit November, we drop off the cliff like 20, 25 percent, and we stay off that cliff until March, in which it comes up about 20 percent.
Right. Well, and that's why I was wondering, as far as, how much you would need as far as winter time, if we carried you over at $55,000 for three months, or even went four months to carry it over, subtract that amount, that's where I'm coming up with about the 700,000 to at least come back now. But, yeah, we can talk about it later on.
Anything else?
Any other comments? And then we'll all be getting together, what's the date that we're all getting together? Teresa, I don't have it in front of me.
It could be possibly August 24th, I believe that was the last Wednesday after, everybody, unless you still want OSU and Son of Water, and I haven't scheduled either one of those.
I think those budgets are pretty minor.
Pretty much.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot we could actually not need there.
Right.
Budget hearings, because they're unmandated.
So, if all the elected officials and department heads are available on August 24th, we could do that that day.
For those of you who just got here, came from the, we did pass to put on the ballot a quarter percent five-year temporary sales tax, and my statements during all our discussion was, we really need to work on two budgets for next year, for 2012, and come to an agreement, a way to cut six and a quarter million dollars out of our general fund budget, and a way to do it if the sales tax passes, so I think that's where the questions are coming at, what kind of additional revenues can we get to lessen the cuts that are needed for next year?
If the sales tax fails.
Correct. Yeah, we got to do two, two if it doesn't pass, you know, one if it doesn't pass, and one if it does pass, so.
One, a small asterisk, I don't think we've ever settled with, we do have the union representation in our title side, and we still don't have a contract with them, so I'm not sure what that's...
They're working on a 2006 contract.
They're working on a 2006 contract, so, that's not going to happen forever, but, you know, it's up to them to make the most moves, but it's something that's hanging over our heads, should hang over years.
We've been there, we got through 13 or 14 contracts so far this year, so get to work on yours.
It's not up to us, we're waiting for them.
We're waiting. On who?
The union.
For what?
To negotiate.
I think they forgot about it.
I forget, too, if I was only paying a little tiny bit of my insurance.
Yep. Well, Jim, what can we do under ORC to force them to negotiate, then, so we can get that done and passed us?
Impose the contract. You guys did it.
We did it, steelworkers.
You had that option.
It's not always the best option, but it's an option. All right, thank you very much.
No? Do we want to take any comments from the audience?
I don't see any audience here. Brad, you got anything to say?
You sure?
All right, motion moved back into executive session to continue until our 1 o'clock pro bait, unless someone can call Judge Walther if he'd like to come over sooner. We don't have a whole lot of executives.
But I think he was not, he was not available till 1.
Oh, he couldn't make it till 1?
Because he had those court cases.
All right, you can get a second.
Second.
Mr. Trail, Mr. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties secure and safe Ohio Rideshare makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion, while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE, or register online at ohiorideshare.com.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings, children not educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and, obviously, stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So, basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't, hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So, that's what really got us motivated to look into this and, and do something about it.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is, is very important to us. We've seen statistics that, quite frankly, shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely, and we're quite happy to announce
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets, we have actual working stoplights, the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, operational railroad crossings, we also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So, we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So, basically, we have the whole class interacting. So, if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So, we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Spansky, we were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left." So, that was very rewarding. And, so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work, so they're just like, "Ooh." And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, "Well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run." And of course, they're, they're very enthusiastic, and, "No, we shouldn't do this." So, we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks, and just because one goes by and the signals stop, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So, we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks, they should walk and continue to look both ways, because it's not safe, and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone, it could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And, as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through fourth grade, some of those children are very small children. The, the main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision, so make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous, and the same thing with trains, we tell them, that train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids! A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places, and when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no, those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first. And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without...
The second video, we show second, third, and fourth grade, and it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
What's up, Osmo? How's it going? Osmo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Osmo.
How come you're dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Osmo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this, they relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile, and he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills, one is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups.
I think it was really nice, because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to Safety Town and they learn left, look left, look right, look left again, and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did Safety Town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Asimo?", and he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe, we don't have to follow those rules anymore, we can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road, and I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review, I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
In 2009, Mr. Carney felt that if we expanded the program and went into the technological era, that we could cover more schools and help more students. We felt that 2nd, 3rd, and 4th graders would get much more out of it and enjoy it if it was on a computer. We use one disc that's called Walk Smart for 2nd and 3rd graders. It teaches the children where to walk, it teaches them things that they should know about traffic signals, and the third part of it is watching for cars. The 4th grade disc is called Safer Journey. That is in a three-part section with a fourth part that's added called Library, so that if they want to go back in as 4th graders and actually look up anything that they just viewed, it will give them a description. Each one allows the student to interact on the computer individually.
You move the mouse back and forth. Try it.
We thought the student will look at it, because they love to work on computers, so that they would look at it as fun and a game, and each student can work at their own level or at their own pace. Our response has been amazing.
They enjoy being on the computer, so I think just by clicking and being able to listen and observe those things, it's more interactive with them.
This program is teaching the skills of being more observant as they're crossing the street, and being more aware of what's going on around them.
It makes me work harder. We have to guess if the cars can come from which way. Gets my brain on learning.
It helps me learn how to cross streets and how to watch for cars.
You have to look both ways when you go across the street and everything, because I like, because it would actually teach me something.
You know, sometimes we just think that students know exactly where they should be walking, there's a sidewalk, and we know that they should cross at the light and look both ways.
It tells you what to do and what not to do in the street.
This just reinforces, because sometimes the students don't know all of those things, they haven't always been taught. They are much better off for being part of the program.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs.